Just move your stuff here. I'll see.
And then we'll let you go look through those. Couple, couple ideas behind that is if you look at, I tried to get you all on the ones that you had requested to be able to do that. The newer members of council. Didn't hear from back from some people, so I tried to be somewhat balancing on being new. So you didn't have a ton. Some did from like Pat requested to be on several boards, but I tried to keep it somewhat balanced. Some council members asked for, to be on less this year because they've been on quite a few for a lot of years. That being said, if you find one that you're like, ah, I really don't want to do that, or I feel like I've been on this for a while, just let me know. I can make sure that is adjusted. So I'll give you a couple of seconds to peruse it, any questions, especially from the new council members. We also broke it out to see who was on what, on this one, just to make sure we had to kind of keep an eye on certain things and who we're covering what. Any questions before I move on, because I'm going to talk more about the list here in a second. Any questions? If you have questions about the board, especially for, if you're a newer member, you're the new member, please reach out to me and just ask me, you can ask Carter. Any thoughts on it? And then if it's something that you're like, ah, I don't know if I, my time is going to be tight, or I think I can't do this, please let me know and we'll work around it. I want to make sure that you feel comfortable doing that, but you also are able to attend meetings and get stuff done. Jenna.
Yeah, I was just looking, what's that art one that we just got it? I don't see that on here.
The which one?
Art, Art Lapo.
Oh, part?
Part, art, A R T, Downtown Art.
Art, response to.
Yeah, that's.
Oh, I don't have that on here.
That is a brand new one, Mr. Mayor, and that's a great catch. We didn't, we didn't.
I'm on it tonight, thanks.
Goodness.
Jenna.
Well, our first meeting is tomorrow at three.
Okay. So do we need only minutes? We need two?
I am and Michael.
Oh. Oh, good, okay, we'll make sure we get that on the list.
Previously, we just didn't have it on the list.
Oh, perfect, okay, no, no. Awesome.
Got a conflict on the MPO. Another board meeting, first and third, these are helping.
So MPO wouldn't work for you?
On the Hall of Justice, Joint Powers Board. I just have to leave it like 10 minutes till 11 to hit the board meeting.
So MPO is going to be open, so if anybody's interested in doing that, let me know.
Mr. Mayor, the other thing that we have open that we did not get confirmation for is the Casbury Chamber of Commerce. As far as a council liaison is concerned.
We don't.
She's going to start that up. They have like you check in to do it, but we don't like go around, like before they used to go around the table.
Uh huh, sure.
At a liaison from a lot of different boards, and we haven't done that.
Oh, okay.
Unless Tina wants it as a, but like what Steve was doing when he was on it, like he would just, she would ask for updates. They would update, put something on the calendar or something significant happening that he would let her know. Otherwise, they don't meet with our board of directors anymore.
Okay, so I think what I'm hearing is we don't need that. How does council feel about that? Do we, are we indifferent about having a liaison to this chamber? You know, remember look at some of the business owners here too, so.
Well, I am, let me just be your liaison. We had a meeting today.
So, so if you have anything to report from there, just tell us now.
I'm happy to keep MPO either, I see Michael's the alternate, so he can take the main spot and I can be alternate or vice versa. It doesn't matter to me.
Is that called Michael Bond?
Uh, Macintosh.
Macintosh. You guys want to have Richard go and help that?
Can Armrest support if you want. In fact, my attendance has been, I have needed an alternate a number of times. I've been on that, which is why I said if somebody else has better availability, take it, but I'm happy to, to keep it and continue to go as I can.
I can take Minim.
And I don't know if, I don't think they need to do that anymore, but I'm not quite sure how you separated it or how, I know it went over to parks now, but the historic preservation. Maybe did we ever have a liaison of the city to that?
Well, that looks like I've got Michael being the main for MPO and then Amber will be. Sound good. And then we do have another one. So as you all know, we've had the opiate settlement. We are moving forward now with the execution of that program to get requests of, you know. Oh my gosh.
With regard to the joint agreement with the county?
Yes, yes, and there will be individuals requesting to say, hey, this is what we were able to execute with the funding that they would get. When they apply for, my brain's fried today.
Well, and, and Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind. No, no problem. The stipulations of the agreement between the city and the county with regard to overseeing the distribution of those settlement dollars is that a committee be appointed by both the county and the city, wherein together they will pick a disinterested fifth person to serve on that committee from among the community. And so my suggestion would be that we consider two council appointments to that committee from among your body here and join with the commission who will be doing the same thing and starting those meetings in earnest, this, this county.
And bear in mind, there's no specific time or date that they've picked as far as saying, oh, well, third Tuesday of every month or whatever. So that will probably be coming down the road. So if you do want to be a part of that, know that they will be deciding to do that. And I think somebody had suggested Brandy since she does the health department possibly, might be a good one.
Yep, let's volunteer, she's not here.
So depending on the daytime and stuff, I'd also be interested.
All right, so with your blessing then, we'll, we will forward the names of Councilor Brandy and Councilor Kyle.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Yeah, I, I think it would be a really cool committee to be on to kind of look at that because it's. You don't have much going on, why don't you take? I know.
We can create a little.
It's funny because today in leadership, I'm like, I like, I'm very interested in that and I think it'd be really cool. But I'm like, and then I looked at my list and I'm like, yeah, I've got 10, no, just go ahead and, I'll go ahead and sit back a minute.
The other thing, Mr. Mayor, that I learned is that the newly formed Senior District Services Board, Senior Services District Board, or however it's phrased, is looking for an ad hoc appointment as well from the council.
Think I got an email, someone requesting Pat maybe, that'd be something that'd be interesting to me.
It's when their.
Meetings are.
Meeting, yeah.
And they just sent me an email saying, hey, if you're, if he's interested, we'd love to have Pat be the liaison. But if you, if you don't have the time, Pat, I absolutely understand that. We don't want to overload you.
I've been going to their setup meetings and so, yeah.
Okay. You certainly don't have to be there for every meeting, Pat, too.
So far I have been talking.
Thanks, Pat. Okay. Thank you. Any others that I'm missing? I don't think so. If you didn't want to mention it, talk tonight, and you just want to reach out to me privately, just let me know. I can sit and chat with you really quick, too. Thank you all, appreciate it. Yeah. Okay, moving along after that, let's talk Community Action Partnership Point in Time Count.
Very good. We have the opportunity to be caught up, as it were, and given a status report on this very important topic. As you know, we are soon going to be heavily engaged in, in this very important process. Kelly Wessels is here from the Community Action Partnership to give us that update. And without further ado, Mr. Mayor, let's turn the time over to, to CAP.
Ms. Wessel.
Hi.
Good to see you again.
Nice to see you all. Thank you all for allowing me to be here for a few minutes today. I have put together a presentation, and I will go through it very rapidly because it has a lot of information. Is by the wonderful partnership that has been developed over the last two years. I give credit to Ms. Becker and to city staff and to Carter and others that have been willing to participate in the point in time. that have been willing to participate in the point in time count and make the Casper and Natrona Counties more robust so that we can be accurate and then really know what we're doing as far as how we're going to target solutions. So I just want to pay my compliments to that because I think it's really important. There have been many things that have happened in the last two years that have led to that. So without further ado, I just want to give you a little bit of background first because the point in time count occurs in January. It occurs in the last week of January technically and is conducted nationwide. And that information is put into a document called the AHR. And the AHR document is actually a congressional document that has all the statistics for every state and all of the national trends and is presented to Congress in December every year. So the information that you're seeing on the screen right now is information that was taken from that report that was produced and published. I believe it was December 15th this year. And so for the state of Wyoming right now, sixty-eight percent of homeless individuals are single individuals. However, families with children are growing, thirty-two percent. So one-third of your count is families with children. That's significant. Some of the population data for the entire state looked at about a growth of up to twelve-hundred approximate individuals, that is, street count combined with shelter counts. The demographics are there very clear. Individuals with behavioral health, about three-hundred-and-fifty are experiencing that. The interesting thing about behavioral health and homeless individuals is sometimes it's hard to know which came first. Because after chronic homelessness, after so many, an extended period of time, people use different things for coping mechanisms or have mental health crises based on being homeless. So it is not always the case that someone becomes homeless because of that. It is also a result of homelessness. The one thing, two things, places that I want to draw your attention because they're growing populations at a state level, but you will also see that they are at a local level, is disabled individuals as well as older adults age fifty-five and older, which is a concern because the ability to access services, to have services that are appropriate for individuals with adaptive equipment and things like that, housing is not developed in that way. So rapid rehousing for those populations are very challenging. And oftentimes, older adults, which is the fastest growing population that we are discovering right now in our community. One of the issues about that is that the behavior of an older adult is to not ask for help in a timely manner. So they tend to wait later. They tend to be secretive about it because they're afraid of losing their independence. And other contributing factors, family members have moved away because they've gone on to other socioeconomic pursuits outside of the area. Their social supports are not here. And they decompensate very quickly. So it is a very difficult population to dial into. They are actually, their form of homelessness and preferred homelessness is car homelessness. There has been a ten percent increase in the state of Wyoming since twenty-three nationwide. The statistic has gone, it was twenty-three percent in twenty-three. No, excuse me, twenty-four percent and eighteen percent in twenty-four. So over thirty percent increase in homelessness nationwide. This is some additional information, the handout, Ms. Becker has that available to you if you should want it, but there's some very specific data points in there. Family homelessness being an increase of over forty percent is a concern. We have to look at affordable housing and workforce housing in order to really get at that housing instability. In addition, I think it's really important to note that there was a decrease in veteran homelessness. Why is that? Decrease in veteran homelessness came about because back in the day, two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, the Veterans Administration decided to have a champion effort of reducing their homeless and ending it, actually with a very lofty goal of five years. Now, we didn't do it, but they came much closer than other entities that were not targeting. They targeted money in very specific rapid rehousing ways. They looked at differing shell, different forms of sheltering resources. And they worked, they took governmental activities and combined them with CBOs, community-based organizations, to combine their effort to really get at that population. However, in the state of Wyoming, I think it's really important to remember that there are still a population of veterans that are still not fully engaged in these services. They still distrust governmental services to a certain degree, which is where community-based organizations really actually have more leverage. So this is some data for Natrona County. I'm going to move on to a little bit more specific to Casper. So the population here, basically of the three-hundred-and-fifty count that we did estimated with shelter and unshelter last January, three-hundred of those individuals were in the city of Casper. The majority of them in the count, and this was something that we debriefed in the homelessness task force, the majority of them are actually, have Casper roots. So they have some form of family relationship or support system that keeps them here. I think it's important to understand how people can be chronic over time and still have family. There are things that go on. We all have family, different dynamics, and people get weary. If you don't have, if they're not engaged in services and that, or they're not able to participate or the service isn't available to them, family systems break down too. So families aren't always the greatest resource and may oftentimes be the cause of somebody becoming homeless, particularly with unaccompanied youth. Our local homeless shelter is the Wyoming Rescue Mission, which does a great job with the population of what they do best. However, they are not a one-size-fits-all and they are not what is considered housing-first or low barrier. And there are times when that becomes important. Things like people who have service animals or ESAs because that's part of their coping mechanisms. There are other types of, people with disabilities don't always do well in congregate shelter because they are unable to be able to participate in certain services. So there are a lot of different reasons that people do not necessarily fit on type of shelter. However, that is a very valuable resource to our community and we have to be able to use it and build upon it in order to help. And we will be counting there this coming week. The support services have been, have grown over the last year as far as connecting in and dialing in so that we're not duplicating each other. I think that it's been amazing to be a part of the housing task force under the Natrona County Safety and Justice Coalition. We have had an opportunity to have a lot of conversation on what kinds of things we could do, and we're making some momentum. One of those things is a project that we have been selected for. We are one of five states, I think it is, across the nation that is participating in a zero return to homelessness cohort. We had the opportunity to go to Philadelphia recently and train, and we are going to be working with not just local law enforcement and other entities as far as how that would look and work and what resources could be cultivated, but also with, we have connections at the state level that. So this is not just a Casper piece, but it is an opportunity to create a model that could be replicated. This is what the subpopulation breakdown looks like. And I think it's important because sometimes we, we kind of like don't know and we, we think it's this population or that population. So sixteen percent of the homeless are reentry, so individuals that have been released from incarceration to street. Behavioral health, twenty-eight percent, which is higher than the average for the state of Wyoming. Seventeen percent is disabled and twenty-three percent are older adults, which is consistent with the state average. The annual point in time count has a purpose. I actually participated, I'm, I go so far back that I was in the first one. I go back to nineteen ninety-five. And that count was done very differently than it is today. But the purpose of the count really is to have a snapshot in time of what it, what potentially a measurement would look like. It is not perfect science. The methodology, you can read it if you want on the HUD exchange, but to be quite frank with you, it's the best we have found so far, but it is not the best tool. One of the things that makes it important is community involvement, which is what you have demonstrated as leaders in this community from the city of Casper, from the volunteers that come across our, and other partner agencies. Collectively, we have an opportunity to do the snapshot correctly and understand our, our dynamics because our world is different than an urban dynamic. We have a very different landscape that we want to protect because we want public health, we want wellness for our community, and we want people to prosper. So the PIT count is a mandated activity. It is, methodology is identified and we look at different demographics. So we look at street homeless, which is literal street. Then there is a definition that we will go with where we are sheltered. So those are things like emergency shelters. Those can be a domestic violence shelter. It can be a lot of different types of shelter. Motel shelter paid by a third party. So if a church is sponsoring a family that is being fit placed because there's a medical need, that can be considered it. And then we count a third in this community, and this is really important. It has been my experience over that time, and like I said, I go back to ninety-five, that one of the things that you need to do in a community with consistency and fidelity is count your unstably housed, the people who are about to be unhoused. Because if you are not looking upstream at what, what some of the recuses are and some of the concerns and what they're dealing with, they will become your chronic homeless in less than five years. That is proven. And so to not count that group is to kind of like ignore the wave that's coming. And we have learned over time that some of those waves look like eighteen-to-twenty-four-year-old youth that are out of foster care. They've aged out. Where do they go? They still have needs for support systems. Many times, they're still in school because they have not, they may have disabilities. I see in my office very frequently now a lot of just-turned-eighteen-year-olds that are on the spectrum that are homeless because they have no place to be. These are really interesting categories, and how do I make solutions for those categories? Part of the data is used for that purpose. It also helps us figure out how we're going to have resources allocated. Valuable resources in a rural community, we need to be really good. And we always have to have matched resources as well. So the thing is, is that this, the strategies that are derived from the data of the PIT count, you know, yes, it rolls up to Congress, but my interest is, how am I going to change that next year? What interventions can my agency do and partner with other agencies so that we can get that down, so that everybody enjoys walking downtown? So everybody feels like they live in a healthy community. I want that. I want that for my employees. And so the thing is, is that how do I do that? I look at the data as to where the trending is and then I just put my resources in that to maximize it. The other part of it is, and then we talk about this around the table at the Homelessness Task Force, and I also think that it is an incredible opportunity to hear other viewpoints, is policy. What is going to benefit a community? What is going to make us healthy? What is going to be fair and just? But also address a problem. And that's what you've got, you all do and have signed up for. So that's what we use this data for. There are many reasons that rural communities do this. There are factors that are occurring in our community. This is some examples, affordable housing shortage, but I don't, I'm preaching to the choir for the most part on that one. Under unemployment and underemployment, lack of supportive services. I think that services, when you bring that word up, it just gives a taste to people of like, well, what more are you going to do for them? Or they're already getting so many things already. To me, it's the right combination of services for the individual and applied in the appropriate way. Not a volume of services because volume does not necessarily mean advocacy. Concerns around family violence and abuse, particularly on young individuals. You know, couch surfing starts young. My youngest in this community since I have been here is nine. So the thing is, is that these are the kinds of things that we see that we need to bring the attention and the point in time count can do. Same trends are happening in nationwide. One of the things to look at though is the, instead of development of affordable housing for people to actually live in, is the national trend of individuals that are purchasing property and turning them into temporary rentals. That is really eroding at housing stock. And if you're not building, that you, you are already behind. And development is like that. I, I used to oversee the development of a lot of permanent supportive housing, ninety-two units of different target population. If you're not building, you're behind because the need continues to grow. So those are some of the circumstances that we're finding in this community. Permanent supportive housing is definitely a need. That is a score that we go through all the time. But I also have a concern because from an economic development point of view and getting people to become economically stable, workforce housing has to be there. There has to be affordable workforce housing for people to live in so that they can make sure that they can make the rent without my help. And the risks of not doing anything, I mean, I'm sure you all are aware, but the risk of fiscal, physical and mental health costs that we deal with, the strain on public services and resources, if it just compresses everything. It's, it continues the cycle of poverty, which we are trying desperately to break. And the consequences of not looking at a sense of humanity within a community, I think is really important because that, that value is the same one that we're going to apply to helping youth in crisis, that we're going to apply to seniors that need our social supports. Seeing people as human and just in a different economic space for me. So some of the initiatives that we've looked at and some of the things that we're talking about, we utilize a coordinated entry system, pursue housing first at all costs because housing first is not housing without boundaries. Housing first is a philosophy that talks about you do not have to prove anything to me to be valid, to be able to access housing. We will work on your stuff when you're stable. When you're in housing, I can work with you a lot faster than if I have to chase you around town. Homeless outreach teams, downtown outreach has been extraordinarily successful. We have been able to do a lot of interventions. We are working very hard on looking at affordable housing development, what that looks like in a continuum, and looking at more wraparound services and shared case management models so that we are not causing people to be a constant consumer of services, but actually being able to work on their lives. That they're not bouncing from agency to agency to agency to agency, but that we can work in a more collective and virtual model at the same time. So I thank you for the opportunity. I think we have more dialogue in the future. We look forward to it. And I also think that we have an opportunity coming this spring that you will enjoy. We are hoping to deploy, begin deploying poverty simulations again so that individuals have the opportunity to understand what the actual dynamic is in, through a poverty simulation in Casper, on what it's like to really try to access services. It's a really cool exercise and I hope that you will take advantage of it. Thank you for your time today.
Thanks, Kelly. Questions? Cap?
Mr. Mayor, so thanks for a great presentation. Of those twelve-hundred individuals statewide, what do you think are, the percentage is here in Natrona County out of those numbers?
So of the twelve-hundred that were counted in Wyoming in January of twenty-four, three-hundred-and-fifty were in Natrona County.
How many?
Three-hundred-and-fifty.
Then.
Give or take a few because of the data, they, they, there is a little bit of deviation.
And then working in conjunction with the Natrona Collective Health Trust, I think you'd agree, they've been a great resource and a great partner in all of this.
Yes, they have. They have really given us an opportunity to be creative, to allow us to have a, a space to speak to this problem. to speak to this problem, but also to bring solutions. And we have had, we have applied for mutual grants together to bring training. One of the things that we're bringing is a trauma-informed, train the trainer series to Nitrona County so that we can train individuals in trauma-informed care to deliver it to other professionals so that it kind of goes out. And so we're more effective in how we work with people. And that was a definitely part of that.
And the date of the count?
Yes. The date of the count is, this year is Thursday, the 23rd. So a week from this Thursday. Woo-hoo! We are going to be out there all day long. We have some opportunities. If anyone is interested, they can contact me. Otherwise, we have some, or go through Liz and we can have that conversation. There's some great opportunities out there. We have some great hubs. We practice it where we have hubs where there are active representation of professionals and doing surveys. We do street outreach, which we have four. This year we will actually have five teams because we have a team that will go very deep in rural. And then we have opportunities to have our mobile clinic. Healthcare for the homeless has a mobile clinic that will do a pop-up. And we have pop-ups inside Department of Family Services as well. So we have a lot of different places that you can engage if you so choose.
Michael?
Kelly, you, you mentioned the, the breakdown of homeless individuals and I think that was reflective of the state, the 68% single individuals and...
That correct.
And then 32%, family children. Would you say that, that percentage is comparable here in Nitrona County?
It's fairly consistent. It's slightly higher on the individual, but the problem with family homelessness is, is that it is a little bit more difficult to count. I think if we had a little bit better data out of the McKinney Vento, which is that of the school district, we would have a better measurement because those dollars follow homeless and unstably housed youth collectively, and then we get a better count. But we have not gotten to that point yet.
Is that data available?
Yes, it is. It gets published. It's just not always available in the way that we can use it.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Sometimes data is only for the person who wants it, not necessarily for the person who needs it.
Thank you.
Questions? Okay. Thank you, Kelly, for coming by.
Thank you so much. Thank you for inviting me. I appreciate you.
Mr. Mayor, before Christie leaves, the kind round, I'm assuming all the council and staff are invited to the opening of the new location, temporary location up at Central Wyoming.
Thanks, Christie. Okay, thank you. Let's move along. We're going to do a little bit of a punt here. We're going to move up the judges so you guys can get out of here a little earlier if everybody's okay with that on the council. Okay? Awesome.
Good evening. How's everyone? I think I've met everybody. So I'm Judge Hand, the Casper Municipal Park, and of course we have Judge Gillespie here as well. I just want to first of all, just make a note, we are under ethical rule which limits essentially what we can do at a meeting before a legislative body. We are permitted to talk about judicial trends and the enforcement of the judicial process and things like that. So that's kind of where I wanted to just focus. I don't want to step on Ms. Sanchez's toes, but first thing that was on my list was to talk a little bit about the new diversion program that we're, we've kind of tried to start this off to see how it's going. Essentially what it is, it's for folks with mental health and substance abuse issues. And we're trying to get people some help. Ms. Sanchez typically meets with us every morning when we have our in custody arraignment. So she's there. She can hear, you know, some of these people's stories and what's going on in their life. And then when we're done with court, she typically goes up to the jail then and meets with them individually and goes through a series of questions to determine whether they're eligible. Participation in the program is voluntary. So essentially some people, they would just rather pay the fine rather than go through and actually get any help, unfortunately. And if that's what they choose, there isn't a whole lot we can do. But I do think that if the program is allowed to continue, I do think that there is some, some hope that we'll be able to bring some help for some of these folks. One of the other things that we've done with that, in connection with it is, the problem with a lot of these people, they, we see them day after day after day and they just start racking up fines. It's not unusual for people to owe $5,000, $10,000 in fines. And so one of the things that we're trying to do, again, to give them the incentive to get some help is we're giving them credit on a monthly basis if they submit proof to the court that they are actively engaged in some kind of treatment or counseling. Doesn't necessarily have to be substance abuse counseling because if there are other issues, essentially whatever counseling they need, we will give them credit off their fines. So, and I think, I don't know about Lisa, but I, I'm seeing a lot of people thinking of that. If anybody knows me, I've been doing this for a good number of years. I really haven't seen in my time a program that I think is as effective to get people that want to get them, get themselves some help. So that's essentially it, but I don't want to step on her toes because I, I see that she was on the jet. As far as trends, you know, we see the same folks from time to time. Like I said, it's not unusual for people to get arrested and they bond up. Unfortunately, right down at the bottom of the hill is the liquor store and that's their first stop. We see them then, next time we, we have court, you know, day after the next time. It's kind of a result, revolving trend with the alcohol offenses. One of the other trends that I've noticed is, I believe, a significant increase in theft offenses. Used to be, years ago, we'd see an uptick during the holiday season, but anymore it just seems like every day our dockets are littered with people with theft offenses. I don't know the answer to that. Obviously our economy, I think, has a big role to play in that. It's something to be aware of. I also just wanted to mention that Lisa and I were able to attend a program that the Wyoming Trial Lawyers Association put on in the fall. It was sponsored by the, some of the Defense Bar. And so it was pretty interesting. It was about essentially DUI enforcement, proving impairment. And it was, it was a good program. It was a day-long program. It was online. But it was put on by essentially the Defense Bar and they brought in a, a good number of expert presenters who have been used as expert witnesses throughout courts, throughout the nation. And it was, it was interesting to hear some of their thoughts and some of the arguments that they have to specifically the chemical testing, the blood tests that are sent down to the, the Division of Criminal Investigation down in Cheyenne, some of the pitfalls that they see in those. So that was the training program that we're able to do. Do you have any thoughts or...?
Well, I have some statistics that I have credit Jackie Brown at the city attorney's office with. These didn't come from me, but I think they might be helpful. So when talking about the diversion program, she tells me that between October 6th, when she started keeping track, and January 13th, there were 142 cases of people that qualified for this diversion program. I'm not 100% sure what the standards are. Erica can probably speak to that better than I can. 142 cases, out of that 142 cases, 93 people took advantage of it. 20 of the 93 people had more than one case, so they were our repeat offenders. They were, these are the people that we see once, twice a week on usually alcohol, public intoxication related type of charges. Of the 93 people, 19 of them actually sought counseling, but only one actually enrolled in an intensive inpatient treatment, which I'm hoping that will get better. 29 sought help via a program, whether it be drug court, the discipleship program of the mission. The majority were seeking inpatient treatment at CWCC, but for whatever reason, either they were incarcerated, we've had to change some of our minimizes so that they could be released from the jail to go to CWCC or CWCC was waiting for a bed for whatever reason. We have had 14 of them that wanted to do like AA, NA meetings and we've given credit for that. So that has been somewhat successful. Then there were 63 people who were wanting help. Now, we don't know, the clerk's office might know, but we don't know, as we stand here today, how many of those people actually have turned in hours. I myself, sitting on the bench, have seen several people that have come in with a lot of different certificates. And we've actually, in some limited cases, started giving people credit on their fines as if they were in jail. So $30 a day, they're doing the intensive inpatient treatment because we would much rather have that incentive for them to get that intensive treatment than we would for them to just be like, you know, okay, I get $50 a month off, so why, I'm going to go down the hill and I'm going to go to the liquor store. Because as Rob said, you know, some of these people have, you know, seven, eight, 10, $12,000 in fines that they racked up at $100 a time and, and we're never going to see them. And we're kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place because we want them to get help. We want to stop the revolving door. But do we, if they don't want help, what do we do? Because then the city's paying to have them incarcerated at $140 a day, which isn't helping anybody. So I don't know what the answer to that is. I agree with Rob that I've seen a lot more theft cases, a lot more petty larceny, lots and lots of shoplifting. And ironically, it's, seems to be a lot of repeat offenders with that too. You know, the same few people that do this over and over again and we give them the same advisement every time. You get five of these in your lifetime and it can be charged as a felony. And I don't know how much it hits home, but I apologize, I'm not as prepared as Rob was. I'm kind of new to this gig, so I'm, I'm going to entertain any questions that you have.
Yeah, let me just follow one point. She mentioned the five theft offenses in a lifetime, and that's a pretty new legislative development. I'm hoping that that will also help because that's a pretty significant thing. And we see a lot of people that have way more than five theft offenses. And so I make a point every time of telling them, if you come back again, you're not probably coming to my courtroom across the street to talk to the big boys. I'm hoping that that will help and I do appreciate the legislature for, for passing that. I think it's definitely a step in the right direction.
Any questions for the judges?
Thank you, judges, for showing up tonight. I'm bummed. This is the first time in four years I've been, I've had the opportunity to meet you all, so I hope we can make it a more regular occurrence because you got a lot of insight to share. I'll admit this is an area I do not feel well-versed in, so apologies if this is a naive or ignorant question, but I had read an article several days ago about, it's a Wildfile article, "The Taking Time Bomb Facing Wyoming's Public Defenders and Their Clients." Curious, this article is all about circuit court and stuff. Our public, I guess my question is, do the folks that come before both of you have issues with getting legal representation, is that an issue in municipal court or is that more so felony-level circuit court?
We don't go through the public defender's office, being a municipal court. So my understanding is currently the city has a contract with a private attorney, Trevor Shank, who was formerly assistant district attorney, and he handles all our cases currently. In years past, we've had other attorneys and possibly more than one at a time. And I, I don't know about Judge Gillespie, but I don't see a problem in our court. Mr. Shank, I think, does a great job. He, he's very well-versed in the law. He's always, he's always available to show up in court. And I don't hear any grumblings from him that, that his caseload is too overwhelming for him at this point. The other thing in connection with that, under Wyoming law, you're only entitled to a court-appointed attorney if there's a possible jail sentence as part of the sentence. So in our municipal court, most first offenses, they're fined only except for DUI, which is a possible six months jail. So they're definitely entitled to petition for a court-appointed attorney and DUIs and then any other, you know, second or subsequent offense where there's possible jail.
Thank you. I learned several things right there. Could I have one more? Thank you. Could you please remind me the financial incentive for taking advantage of the mental health court diversion? You said it was, it pays off $30 a day for every day of their treatment, $30 off what? I'm sorry, what was?
Only the intensive inpatient, yes. If they do like NA meetings or A meetings, we require at least four a month to give them the credit for $50 a month off. But if they actually go and check in and stay with the treatment and stay for at least 30 days, in the past, we have, and I think I've only seen it three times since I've been on the bench, but the people that have actually stuck with it and stayed with the 30, 60 days, we have paid them, given credit on their fines as if they were in jail at the $30 a day. But that's only the intensive inpatient.
Thank you. My question is, I love that that's a program. I've been asked several times from constituents in a variety of ways about potential people working off fines. Do we have any way for people to, through community service, through any of our city departments or anything? Do we have any mechanisms available for people? Maybe they don't want to do treatment or whatever, but they would pick up leaves or mow grass or something through parks. I don't know. Does a program like that exist? Has that ever been a discussion?
We, we do have that. And I typically reserve it for juveniles and adults with disabilities. I've made exceptions to that, but for the most part, I'd rather see people out there hustling up a job and becoming productive members of society. But to answer your question, yes, we do. It's administered through someone at the police department and I apologize.
Brittany, I believe.
It is Brittany. Great, thank you.
So we essentially, if they're eligible, we refer them to the PD. We give them, instead of paying X number of dollars every month or whatever, we would require that they turn in X number of hours of community service each month. Brittany handles all that. As far as where she sends them, you have to talk to them about. We do have that.
Thank you. Could I?
Yep, you bet. Sorry, Pat.
Sorry. You'll get your spot eventually.
No, no, Kyle's not done.
One more, and then I'll let you go. And then I'll shut up. I just want to take full advantage of the opportunity.
You're good.
I was just curious, again, very naive, very ignorant about all things municipal court, judicial system. I've thankfully been able to stay out of it for the most part, so yeah, I just don't know a lot about it. Do you all have recommendations? Is there anything you see on a day-to-day basis that the system could be working better or there's anything within city council's authority to do to achieve better outcomes, to make your jobs easier? I mean, do you see any opportunities for doing things better, I guess, is my question?
Do you have any thoughts on that?
Or if there's another form in which, you know, is more appropriate.
Nothing, things go pretty well. I mean, we've been a little short-staffed in the clerk's office. We've had a little bit of turnover help here lately, so things have been a little bit short-staffed there, but we're, you know, we've got a couple weeks now, so we're getting easier. One of my concerns when I was first about this job and then was offered it was the security, but our security is amazing. I think we have the same security as every other court and these guys do an amazing job. I mean, I feel completely secure. And once in a while, you do have somebody that gets a little angry or, you know, a little froggy, but these guys that we have are great, I feel completely secure with them. So I don't really know of anything that I can put a finger on right now that could change.
And I would probably agree with Judge Lesby. I, you know, again, I've done it for quite a while, and so I think that, I think things are going pretty smooth right now. I would say, probably as smooth as I've seen it, so. And a lot of that is due to the council's support, making sure that they have the security. A lot of it, too, is we have our, essentially, probation department out of the court. One of our court staff is what we call her Case Coordinator, and she's got a tremendous caseload of people. But in years past, we didn't have that available, and so I think that's another level of accountability that definitely helps. And as far as the security, I would just, one other kind of war story, I guess. There was, it's not just people, you know, threatening us or threatening witnesses or whatever. About a year ago, I would say, we had a gal that, in the middle of court, went down with a grand mal seizure, and Officer Burns was on it within seconds, and provided an aide on the radio with the fire department, and they were there immediately. So it's, again, I commend the council for that as well. My dad, when I was growing up, was a municipal judge, and at one point in time, he had somebody pull a gun on him in open court. And I, thank God, never had anything like that, and I don't see it ever happen, especially now they have to go through metal detectors, so.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Something I did wanna bring up, I'm not sure where we're at with it, but we've been talking a lot lately about 48, 20, no, how many hours? 12 hours?
Yeah, 12 hours.
12 hours, for some of the alcohol offenses especially, so this is the revolving door people with toxins that we're seeing all the time, that, you know, if we could bring them in and just kind of hold them 12 hours, and then when they do a PBT and they blow zeros, then they're released. And I'm not sure where we are on that, whether they get charged with a citation or whether they don't get charged on that, but that's something that's been discussed, just for you guys to think about. I'm not sure where we are with that, but.
And that comes from us, right? We, I'm sorry, I just leaned over.
That's okay, Mr. Mayor, and the reality is, we are talking about those kinds of things and evaluating what changes we need to make to put something like that.
Talking right now.
Yeah, it's kind of, we're all brainstorming about it at this point.
Yeah. So I guess I thought we already had a diversion program, but obviously we don't.
Mr. Mayor? I can answer that. There still is a juvenile diversion program, you're correct. But the current program only applies to juveniles, and this is more of an adult diversion program. And I apologize, I should have clarified that at the outset, but the diversion program's still active as well.
So I note, notice also on this, Mayor, that as far as the city's concerned, it wouldn't add additional costs, but I was unsure on that, because typically, these add additional costs. I think it's a great way to spend money trying to help individuals instead of incarceration, but.
Do you wanna move on to it now, or do you wanna wait?
Mr. Mayor, I would say that the diversion MOU discussion might be real handy to have when this report is done, even though it's later down the agenda, if it pleases the council. Because a lot of these questions dovetail nicely with what Eric has to report on that.
I think we're gonna get into that here in a minute, Pat. Okay, we'll talk about the diversion MOU. Sorry. No, 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 you're going down the right path.
Good stuff.
I know, Jenna, I had a question, so we'll go to here. Go ahead.
Mine is simple, not so much a question, but, well, I guess it is. You mentioned that, you know, we give you a lot of support as far as security over in the courts, but is there anything us as a council can do to help further in your job, whether it be trainings or provide some support somehow else that you're looking for?
I appreciate that, and, you know, obviously, being attorneys, we have to have a certain number of training hours every year. And I am always open to training opportunities. The program I mentioned through WTLA, they were kind enough to offer that to sitting judges free of cost. So that was a win-win. But, yeah, you know, I'm always interested in more training.
So can I, can I ask, like, a lot of us, we, like, when we're doing reviews and whatnot too, a lot of us don't know the ins and outs of your job. So if, you know, if you come across something like that, is it appropriate for you to ask us?
I think we're kind of recruiting our personnel.
Is that? Oh, okay. So that's not right here.
Yeah, yeah.
But if they have needs?
Needs?
They come to counsel or Carter, and then?
Mr. Mayor, we've got a completely separate track as it relates to those kinds of things, and so without a doubt, there are opportunities to discuss those sorts of.
Okay, sorry.
Oh, it's good.
We're there for you. How about that?
Thank you.
Actually, if I had to answer that question, I would say the only thing that would help me is to have a written copy of the code, the municipal code, on the bench, because then I have to trial, and then I go out to delivery, and I have to look it up on the internet, and that would be helpful. I don't even know if a written code, you can use anymore, but I'm old, and I like books.
Consider it done. Consider it done. Make that happen.
If I was gonna answer that question, that's the only thing I think.
Yeah, absolutely. One last, a small one. You said you're seeing a lot of theft cases these days. Are there any trends? Do you, the theft cases, is it kind of across the board? I know vehicle theft was going up for a while there. Do you see trends or patterns, or is it just across the board, just a lot of stealing going on?
There's been a lot of people.
Yeah, I think a lot of retail theft, I think that's probably the primary, primarily what we see. A lot of the auto burglaries, they're not gonna come through our court.
Sure.
Because they're getting into felony land at that point. But I would say retail theft is probably.
Okay, okay. I was trying to get an idea of if it's like, you know, people stealing basic necessities or stealing high-dollar items to sell, you know, elsewhere, you know, anything, any insight we can glean from it, but.
Yeah, I would say a little of all of that. You know, we do see people that come in and they, they claim that they're, eat their family, but then, again, we see people that are, admit to selling, stealing stuff just to go out and resell it.
We see a lot of high-end electronics, things like that, those buy Walmart, you know, headphones, stuff like that. So we don't always see in our court, we don't always see what the report says, you know, what they actually stole. We usually get a X amount of dollars, it's due from Walmart or whatever, so we don't always know what it is they stole. Stolen, I know that we have a lot of times where those scanners at Walmart, you know, when you can check yourself out, they're not scanning everything, there's been that certain times, too. I don't know what, I couldn't tell you exactly the times.
So, Carter and Eric, is there any other municipality, say Cheyenne, Gillette, that has a similar program already going?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor, the answer is yes, but I am proud to say, and we'll hear in detail, that none of them are nearly as effective in having the results that you're about to hear. So that's an exciting thing for Casper.
Thank you. Pat's ready to go with the diversion.
Yeah.
Let's get the judges out of here, man. So very quickly, let me just say that we thank you guys for coming. We're gonna get you here regularly on a more consistent schedule, orderly to talk to council. And if there's anything you guys do need from us, please don't hesitate to reach out, Carter, any of us, and we'll do to help you guys out.
Thank you, Mayor.
I don't know what Judge Hand's schedule is like, but I'm gonna stick around for a couple minutes, if the council has any other questions, as Eric takes this.
Thank you, please.
Well, I've got a dog to pick up at daycare, so I'm gonna excuse myself.
Take care, Judge. All right. Well, let's move into the diversion MOU, if that's okay. Is that okay, Emily? Eric, sorry. Is that okay, Eric? Can we move you up, just so it's all fresh, what we're talking about?
Mr. Mayor, I think I'm actually gonna kick it off, so.
Oh, perfect, okay.
I think I'll stand up here. The judges did an excellent job, Mayor and Council, of kind of teeing this up. Matter of fact, I don't even need to go through the statistics at this point. To my right is Ms. Erica Sanchez and Sarah Saltson from Central Wyoming Counseling Center. Erica is on the ground, working with my deputy, Jackie Brown, in the court to implement the diversion program, and so I wanted her to come and introduce herself, and she can explain a little more kind of what it looks like from a nuts-and-bolt standpoint. But on your agenda is an MOU that, with your blessing, we'll bring forward next week for formal approval. To give you a little bit of background, maybe a year ago or more, the state enacted some rules through the Supreme Court to allow a mental health diversion program in various courts, and through the NCSJ and others, we had an opportunity with Chief Justice Fox, and lately I've been working with Justice Fenn regarding the implementation of this program. And the state had initially wanted to do a pilot program up in Campbell County, and because they thought it was smaller, it'd be easier to control and do kind of a test case. And what they found is, it's, there's not enough folks entering that program to be statistically significant. And, again, it's at the county level in circuit court, and their county attorney had a much different approach to it in terms of how they were going to implement it. There's been discussions with our district attorney about implementing it in circuit court, and I think they're getting close to being able to implement it. But my office said, "Hey, if the judges are willing and Central is willing, why do we gotta wait till we get this enacted? Let's just hit the ground running." And so we actually started to implement this diversion program last fall, I think October was when we first started keeping some statistics. And initially, we tried to utilize a model whereby we would defer prosecution. We didn't get a lot of takers, and so the decision was made to kind of pivot and do it differently. We would sentence them, but then give them credit for actually getting treatment, getting help, and that has been much more successful. And you heard the numbers earlier, I won't repeat them, but when we reported this to Justice Fenn in the Supreme Court, they were just blown away. They said, "This is wildly successful." They couldn't have imagined it would be as successful as we've already shown in the first three months of this. And so I think it's kudos to our judges, my staff, the Central folks, and the court staff. This is really groundbreaking, and the thing is, is now that we've got it up and going, the statewide rules require us to enter into a formal MOU to kind of formalize the process. And so what you see in your packet is a draft, but that has been a collaborative effort with the Supreme Court and Central to really tailor the wording in that MOU to fit what we're implementing here. And we've actually been working with the Supreme Court to look at changes to statewide rules, to allow even more flexibility for localities such as ours to implement a program that makes sense for us. Now, I know there is a question with regards to the cost, and that's the beauty of this. For the city of Casper, everybody that we can divert from having to incarcerate, and we can get them into treatment at a place like Central, we're saving dollars, because we're paying roughly $140 a day to incarcerate them. Central Wyoming Counseling Center gets a block grant, and with mental health redesign, one of the priority populations is law enforcement involved, and so they're able to utilize their state block grant to pay for the inpatient treatment, the intensive outpatient treatment, the counseling that they're providing. So it's a win-win, frankly, and it is, and keeping that funding for our community mental health center intact is really crucial. But we hope that in the long term, that we'll be able to get folks, you know, the help they need back to being productive members of our community, at the same time, saving the taxpayers' money by not having to incarcerate them. So we're really excited, we think this is off to a great start. And at this point, if I might, just turn it over to Ms. Sanchez, just to give you any detail that she might think that I've missed, or correct any misstatements I've made.
Hi. Pretty much got it all, I mean, great job, so I'm not sure if you guys have questions for me.
Questions for Ms. Sanchez, yeah.
We referenced a couple times the criteria by which people would be eligible for this, it sounded like maybe you'd be the one to ask about that. Sure. So a big part of what we're looking for is, you know, is there a mental illness, and then, you know, what kind of substance there is. And then usually, if you've got one, you've got the other, right? So once we see those, then we can jump into action and see what are they eligible for, so what kind of programs? It could be, you know, an intensive outpatient, it could be a residential program. It also gives me the opportunity to talk about our detox program. Sometimes they're not interested in coming residential, or they're not ready to take that step, but I wanna talk about how, if they ever need to detox safely, that they can come to us and detox, you know, for a couple days or whatever. And so it gives me just a real chance to just, you know, as they're being released, sit down and just go through all the services that we offer and hand out residential applications, or have my laptop open if they wanted to pay right there for one-on-one counseling. I'll schedule them with a counselor on the spot, so they're not having to go up to, you know, the, you know, up to CWCC and get that scheduled. A lot of times, they don't have cell phones or anything like that, so I do all of that, I write out their payment cards, and just try to really work with them, meet them where they're at. So I don't know, sorry.
No. Other questions for Ms. Sanchez?
Do you feel, thank you, Mayor, do you feel that your block grant is large enough to absorb all of this?
It's a great question. Yes, well, we do have adequate funding at the time to support this program. I guess it'll depend on how much it grows. But CWC wanted to make that commitment. Before the program even started rolling, we brought Erica on board. She helped design it along with our CEO, Jim Cowser. We committed to funding her position because we believed in the program. And so right now, I don't think we're seeking additional funding, like Mr. Nelson described, it's kind of a win-win. It works with the resources we have in place at the time.
Jenna, I've been Michael.
Sorry. I just wanna say it's kind of like a testimony of the program. Ironically, by coincidence or not, but I was in the DMV, and a couple of your gentlemen that were in this program were getting ready to graduate last week, and so they were there doing DMV, whatever they were doing. But he, I was just happened to be sitting next to him, so I started chatting, like, I do with other people, if you know me, I just talk to them, anybody who's sitting next to me. But.
Don't underestimate.
He was very excited about his graduation program, and he, I was asking him about it, and he just went on of how good it was for him and how appreciative he was about that program and how it straightened him up, and realized that, just the counseling, the one-on-one counseling that he must have done with him, he's just realizing that he needed to go a different direction with his life, and he was really crediting that program quite a bit, thankful for it. I told him to, you know, do well and not be a suck, again. So it was kind of a joking thing with us at that part, we had rapport. So it was okay, but.
Sure.
No, he did, no. He was a good guy, gave him some job leads and things like that, too, so. But again, just very appreciative of the program and couldn't say enough good things about how it's changed his life, so.
By the time they graduate our program, we, you know, we really wrap them with, we do like wraparound services, so they get a case manager, a peer specialist, a counselor, I'm trying to think the other, but also. And so by the time we, our real goal is by the time they graduate, that they have a place to live, that they have a job, and that, you know, we also, when they go to graduate, we wanna set them up with services, for like outpatient services. We don't think just as you graduate, that's it. We wanna make sure that we do like relapse prevention, if that's what they're there for, they continue to do one-on-one. They continue to do one-on-one counseling if it's mental health. So it's good to hear that, you know, you found value in the program and all that. It's great that we have them up in DMV, but we try to get them, you know, their license, birth certificates, social security cards, all of that. A lot of times, they come to us without any of that. So by the time they leave, we try to, you know, get all of that set up.
Yep, and I think that's what.
It's not just addressing their addiction, but their life skills. There's a lot of life skills training, whether it's cooking or getting their resume together, things like that, things that will help them be successful as they move on and there's the recovery.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, thank you both for being here. I appreciate it. I'm very excited about this. Eric may have said it, or maybe you did and I missed it. Is this, if I understand diversion programs, are they typically for first, like first-time offenders necessarily or not necessarily?
Not necessarily. Program at any point?
So at any point. A lot of times, it takes them kind of going, getting, you know, I'm trying to think of a good example. So one of the clients, they came through a few different times. I'll go to the lobby, NCC, and wait for them to be released. They'll walk past me and, you know, slowly, I build that rapport with them. So it does take them coming through a few different times before I, you know, can kind of talk them into getting into some kind of program with us. And sometimes, you know, they'll get into, you know, residential program, only stay a week. Then the next time, you know, something happens, they get other public talks, then I convince them to come back to us. I'll stay two weeks. And then slowly, we're seeing that, you know, the time that they actually graduate the program. So, yeah, it does take a little bit of time.
Mayor, and I might add, yeah, it's, we see, and the judges kind of mentioned this, the same people over and over again.
Right.
So we know that they may rack up $10,000, $12,000 in fines. They're unemployed, maybe they're homeless or not stably housed. And there's zero chance that they can ever pay that. So the only recourse eventually we have is that, well, they're in contempt. And so now they're going to work this off by staying up at the detention center at 140 bucks a night to the cost of the city. And so really, it's not a first-time offender. That's, it's, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, it's some of these people that are really, a lot of recidivism. But what's important is, you know, they've got to be nonviolent. They've got to be low-level public intaks or, you know, those types of things. So there are criteria. So we're not just let anybody get out of jail free card. It's that they meet certain criteria, that, you know, they do an initial intake. If they qualify, it may take half a dozen times. So they decide, okay, now I'm going to try this out.
The key is connecting with them. If they are someone that's a repeat offender. Part of our culture at CWCC is you never know when it's going to be that time, when they're ready. So we want to be ready. And by connecting with them sooner and sometimes several times, we increase our chances for getting them the help they need.
Other questions?
Mayor, if there's no other questions, then I guess if council is good, we'll bring this forward for approval at next week's formal meeting. And then the last question is, the Supreme Court is very interested in doing a public signing ceremony where we might do a press release and they would come up for that signing. And so my question is, is that something, Mayor and Council, that you would be interested in doing? I think it would bring some awareness to the program and certainly of awareness to the problem. But it's certainly up to you all.
So two things on the table. Is everybody okay with moving forward to approve that MOU next week? Everybody good? Then the second question is, is that doing a public signing? Would it be Kate, or would that be from the Supreme Court?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'm not exactly sure. I've been corresponding with their staff liaison. And so if we're interested in that, I'll work out the details.
Is council okay with that, if we did some type of a public?
Would it make sense, Mr. Mayor, to do such a thing up at the Counseling Center rather than City Hall?
If council would be amenable to that, we could do it over there because I think that's where the outreach is going. Is that something, Eric, what do you think?
Mr. Mayor, I think it's completely up to you all.
I think that'd be a little bit better than the City Hall.
Two other questions before. So who does this fall under? I mean, is it Carter? Would it be Erica's city attorney? How does that interplay? In terms of?
How's, what's the structure overseas? We know that CWCC has their components. This is overseen as far as the diversion program to the city of Casper. Is that what you're asking, Pat, kind of the structure?
Mr. Mayor, I think it's a little bit of a collaborative effort. I mean, obviously, my deputy's in there prosecuting, you know, on a daily basis. The Central folks are going to be there. We're interacting with, you know, the court staff, the judges as well, you know. And so we've got folks that are reporting to the city manager. We've got two of your direct reports that are involved in that. But certainly, to commit to it is an act of council. Then last question is, down the line, if the current legislature doesn't seem to have a lot of interest in mental health or pain for it, I should say, and I'm totally fine on, you know, we would need to look at a budget line item at that point in time for the city. I mean, and I don't see that immediately happening, but. Mr. Mayor, that's a little bit out of my wheelhouse. But what I would say is, we can collect the data as we're going and plug that into some financial analysis. And then we'll continue to monitor what the state does in terms of funding for Central. And if we come to a point where the funding becomes an issue, then obviously, we'll involve the city manager and, you know, he'll make the determination how that gets presented to council. But I think it's probably too soon. I don't want to speculate where we're going to be, so.
Anybody else? Kyle?
I'm curious, as far as like the financial, the incentive that we provide people to participate in the treatment. Is there any way, I wonder, do you guys reevaluate that on an ongoing basis? Are we, well, I guess the program just got going. So maybe the structure that we have in place, we only have a few months of kind of experimentation. But I guess I'll just, I'd be curious to know if we reevaluate that over time, like if we increase the financial incentive, whether that achieves better outcomes? If maybe we incentivize graduation to further incentivize people seeing through the entire course of their treatment? I'm just curious if we plan on reevaluating that or if we have.
Mayor, Counselor, so as I understand it, because I'm not there every day, that's really a function of the judge's discretion in terms of giving that credit. So I don't want to speak for the judges. Certainly, my office can make recommendations. And so as we proceed down that road and collect more data, I mean, it's certainly something that we can analyze and make a determination. You know, we certainly want it to be sufficient to incentivize people to actually get the help they need. Especially, you know, speaking candidly, it's kind of play money because we know we're never going to collect it, right? So where's that sweet spot? I think that's to be determined.
Thanks. All right. Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, before we move on, is there a reason this room is kept at a temperature of?
So we don't all fall asleep, Pat.
Fiscal conservatism, dude. It's throwing out money. It's expensive.
Yes, go ahead.
So I was just thinking about, I think it's Kyle, is it Mr. Yanra?
Yes, thank you.
You were saying that, you know, you're kind of uneducated about courtrooms, and that's good. I mean, that's a good thing. But I can't speak for Mr. Hand, for Judge Hand, but I'm welcome for you guys to come anytime you want to and watch and ask questions. And, you know, if you want to know why I ruled the way I did on something or what our procedure is or whatever, I'd welcome questions. So that's an open invitation anytime.
I appreciate it. Thanks, Lisa. Yes, you are excused. Thank you. Great questions. I think it's a great program, something that I think has been in the pipeline for several years, trying to figure out how to do that. So, Pat, to your inquiry, we've adjusted the heat. So if anybody wants to fight Pat about that.
Don't have lights or?
I want answers. Why are there no lights?
There's energy all around.
I was having trouble seeing people.
Trying to save the budget.
I thought maybe it was for the presentation. I don't know.
All right, let's move on quickly. We're a little behind schedule. So I want to make sure we get staff home on a reasonable time, too. So let's go ahead and move up to the Wyoming Governor's Big Game License Coalition Grant.
Mr. Mayor, Counselors, you probably know that we have had a long relationship with this funding partner. And we hope to continue that relationship with some grant awards that we're pursuing on behalf of work surrounding the river. And so with that, if I could turn some time over to Jolene to walk you through that a little bit. This is in our effort to make sure you're aware of these grants that we're pursuing. And in this case, we're happy to report that there's no cash match for these, for this one and that kind of thing. So that typically is a big question that you have, which makes a lot of sense, that you would want to know that. Nonetheless, Mr. Mayor, I could turn time over to Jolene.
Jolie?
Counsel, I'm here to ask for your authorization to write a grant to the Wyoming Governor's Big Gate License Coalition for a riparian area planting. The restoration that we did from Rod Park to the water treatment plant on the banks is sparsely populated with vegetation. And we've done some studies to figure out why. We now have some of those answers. And we'd like to get some money together to go and re-vegetate the banks appropriately. Most that we could probably ask for from the Wyoming Governor's Big Game License Coalition is $15,000. The cost to re-vegetate right now is estimated to be at about $40,000. So we'll need to look for additional private money. We'll go to our river fund that we have. And so there isn't technically a match. But the grant that we would be asking for does not cover the expense of the project that we're wanting to do. And with that, I'll take questions.
Questions, thoughts? Any concerns, anything like that? It was pretty straightforward, Carter?
Yeah, it is. It's a great, great opportunity, great work.
Council, okay? Jolene, moving forward with that?
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. All right, Platte River Common Master Plan.
Mr. Mayor, Counselors, this is what I would consider a rather proactive approach as it relates to looking at the Platte River Commons area in a different way. Certainly, over the years, there have been a number of successes as it relates to things that have happened over there. However, there's also a lot of opportunity area as well. And so we have ascertained the help of a number of partners here wherein they're all willing to contribute to some work as it relates to potentially reimagining ways in which we can utilize the opportunity areas in the commons for different ways and moving into the future. I'm pretty excited about this reimagining, if you will, particularly if it relates to creating some opportunities that we haven't perhaps been able to take advantage of at this point. And so, you know, this is an exciting time, an exciting juncture, I would say. Zulema and Tom have been working on this master plan and this partnership for quite some time now. And so it would probably behoove us to turn some time over to them to walk us through some of these finer details and hopefully get your support with the little contribution that we have in mind.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Counselors. Good to see you. So as the city manager indicated, we've been working on this for just a little over a year now, identifying opportunity area in the Platte River Commons that we could potentially expand our parks and rec operations. You know, this property has been imagined as sort of a business or commercial park for quite some time. And some of the development in that sector has not come to fruition as we had hoped. So we have this beautiful piece of property in the middle of our community, riverside, great views of the mountain. And we really feel like it's been underutilized. And if we can just activate the property with some new activity, then that could spawn additional economic development, hopefully, in the area. And so the master plan is proposed to be recreation and sports anchored, meaning that some of the primary development would need to be recreation and sports, with the intention that those activities would bring people to the property and that could potentially spawn some other types of activity, like retail, maybe additional food and beverage, things like that. And so the RFP was drafted to attract consultants that had some specific expertise in parks and rec development and sports and recreation tourism. And it is our hope that we will really think about every possible thing that we could bring to the property, vet it out, and identify the highest and best use of the property that could return an investment for development and maximize that ROI for us. And so part of the master plan would also be to identify those land uses and then do an economic impact analysis to show what those land uses could bring potentially to any interest of economic development or revenue. And so really, that's kind of a driving force behind the project. And hopefully, you know, we can unify these partners and develop some of those cool new opportunities for us and activate that property to do some good for our community.
Any questions? Yeah, Jenna?
It's so, you went through it so fast. I'm still trying to register everything that was being said. But when you talk about the actual plan, when it comes down to it and the designing of it, are you going to seek input on what people would like to see? Or, because I'm just like, I'm thinking of that space and as far as like tourism and bringing an economic impact. Like, we have, if it's going to be sports-oriented, like I, to me, right away, I think, are we going to have like a party space or a gazebo or a place where people can, youth can utilize? And we can host like a birthday party or they can host a wedding or a small reception? Or, you know, to bring some more usage and money to the work for the upkeep and stuff? Is that part of what you're going to be seeking? Kind of like you've done in the past for all the others?
Mayor, Counselor, so the intention would be that we identify a large number and variety of potential uses and then have the consultant kind of work out what impact those uses could have on the community so that we can determine the highest and best use of the property. And so the short answer, I think, to your original question is yes. It will be concepted out very similar, if you want to compare, to what we did for the Halo, where the consultants will take all of the data that they've gathered from the stakeholder group that they will work very closely with, as well as the public input that will be required. And we'll be collecting that through various sources to concept out what it appears that the communities and the stakeholders are really looking for in that property, coupled with the benefit of the impact that it brings.
Cool. Exciting.
So anything that happens over there is on a 99-year lease? And would that apply also, you know, to the city of Casper?
You guys know?
Mayor, councillor, so our understanding is yes. The property is not available for purchase, nor would we necessarily want to purchase it as brownfield property. And so we would likely look for any use that would be operated by the city of Casper at a lease opportunity there.
Mayor, so in negotiation, I mean, would the Joint Powers Board, they're part of this process, but could we get a determination ahead of time what a lease figure might look like on as part of the master plan, I think? Because I'd hate to build a complex over there and then all of a sudden lease rates, the city can't obligate itself long-term.
Yeah. Mayor, councillor, I was very excited. Zulema's carried really the heavy load here, and I've been along for the ride, but I was very excited about this opportunity because I've watched the AMCO reuse agreement Joint Powers Board for decades, a long time, trying to sell property. When my wife was on the board, I used to tease her that they were just trying to build a life support system for a golf course. And probably maybe a little harsh, but just the way I teased her about it. And so part of this has been really, really beneficial because in these conversations that we've had with the AMCO reuse agreement Joint Powers Board is they're recognizing that part of their original plight, their original task, was economic development and to support the golf course. And we really believe this can do both. It's fascinating to me, Zulema's helped educate me that sports just through the city of Casper bring about $9 million in economic impact to our community every year. The idea of this facility could be, and we've talked about, you know, softball fields, mountain bike trails, community areas, all kinds of different areas, the idea that we revitalize this area and that could be beneficial and that draws more people to the golf course. So it helps support the golf course, helps support the restaurant, helps support that so area, that whole area. So we're really are working with them on reimagining the concept of what it looks like to develop that area. They've been trying for decades to try and lease that property for a fairly high rate per square foot without a huge amount of success. And so they're open to the concept of looking at this and saying, hey, maybe this, you know, sports destination base can be an anchor for us that then draws other people in. Because again, if we build a really active and vital sports facility there, that could pull other properties in. So when they asked us, you know, what would you be looking at for a lease, I boldly told them in one of our meetings, free, you know? So I don't think they're surprised that our first ask from them is going to be, we want to be a partner on this. We don't want to be the financial, the golf course, you know? If and when they run out of money, the Casper is going to be, along with the county, the people that are there holding that, having to deal with it, kind of be paying for ourselves if we were paying a high lease rate there. And so our work with them is going to begin at $0. Going to begin with, this is important for our whole community, and that was part of the charge of the AMCO reuse agreement Joint Powers Board from the beginning, was economic development and diversification of that area, not just simply selling property to support a golf course.
I would just add, councillor, that in this phase, we're just concepting out the property, right? And so once we decide what recreation opportunities we want to bring, then we'll decide, are those private or are they potentially public? And if we decide that they're public and the city wants to take ownership of that, then we will negotiate the terms of the land so that we can build. So that's just an act.
So it sounds like it's kind of-
We would know, we would know the rate before we committed to anything.
It sounds like what we're doing is an economic or a incremental, even forward, kind of what we've done. So it's just a very beginning infancy of this.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I really appreciate the conversation here, and I just want to be emphatic. This is an opportunity with our partners to reimagine directions that this could go. This is not anything that the city would be bound to or direction that the city wouldn't have input in and those kinds of things. So given the amount of opportunity area that's still available, given all the years that this relationship and this agreement has been in place, this could be very opportune to consider different directions that we may want to go. And I do emphasize "may" want to go. This does not commit any of the partners to really anything, except rather to master plan a direction that hopefully is really productive and beneficial to everybody involved.
Well, it looks like the recommendation is for us to support the MOU, for us to move forward with the partnership of the other organizations to be able to do the total 60,000? Does this commit us to the 9,000? Is that what this is? So this would commit us to the $9,000 in, to the whole scope of the 60,000 partnership?
May I add that the second part of that is that the city would take the lead in contracting with RDG Planning and Design, which is the consultant that was unanimously selected by the selection committee of many of the stakeholders to do the master plan for us. And so we would take the lead, we would contract with them. I would head that project up, similar to what I did with the Parks and Rec Master Plan, and then we would invoice, you know, the appropriate amount to each of the entities based on the MOU.
Yeah, Amber.
So then 60,000 is the actual amount that the consultant, okay, it's not an estimate?
That's their actual amount.
So is that the same group that worked on the rec master plan?
Yes, sir.
In the Halo?
No, that was actually completed by heirs.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
And I know 9,000 is not insignificant, but it's not a big, I mean, for us financially to obviously do that.
Mr. Mayor, particularly when, you know, the rest of the partners are contributing something very similar, seems like a very fair way to go in terms of this, again, very proactive project.
And that's, I was just going to ask that on, just ask and get that on the table. I think it's a good investment for us to do this for the long term. So that, I'll, anybody, yeah.
So if you have a lot of grassy area, they had water. I believe AMCO had some significant water rights that at some point were, I thought, going to get turned over to the city in that agreement, but so would we be privy to be able to pump out of the river if we had?
Mayor, councillor, again, I think those are things that would be negotiated in a lease agreement, but we would certainly advocate that the irrigation is, given their water right and access to irrigation water.
Mayor, councillor, that's another huge benefit of the site. You know, the idea if we build anywhere else, we have to pay for irrigation water. The idea that there's the potential for that water to be free here because there are a significant amount of water rights there, and Casper does have those water rights. Has secured some of those along with AMCO, the primary or the first usages for that irrigation. Again, it's a huge benefit when you're looking at park facilities, the idea that irrigation water could be free.
All right, everybody okay in favor of that? Thank you all. Appreciate it. I like this because I can't see everybody. We can turn this off. We didn't know what happened. We had a whole, it was a whole thing. The hat was cold, the lights were low. It was a joke for her. Okay, well, we're not doing too bad here. So let's go ahead and do an agenda review. Carter, do you have anything you want to?
Well, you know, given that this is one of our first work sessions with new members of our council.
Oh, thank you.
The grid document that you have in your materials is really a planning document that we use to try to set agendas and bring forward ideas and evaluate the direction that your meetings will go here in the near future. As you can tell, we don't go too far into the new year as it relates to planning out these meetings, but nonetheless, we do want you to have a really good feel for what is coming up, what space you have on the agenda, and, you know, give you that opportunity to provide the input to plan your discussions and orient the work that staff needs to do in order to get ready for these meetings. One of the other critical items of this planning document is on the very back page that's entitled Future Agenda Items, wherein we lay out sort of the longer horizon, as it were, with respect to ideas and items that council has asked for or some discussion on, even though it may be sort of set out on the longer term. Soon, you will see this document expanded in such a way that it'll include critical budget topics that need to be had with the council. That lays out a lot of the detail for, that we use to put your budget together so that when we get to the formal deliberation phase, there isn't much, by way of surprise, that you would anticipate or expect to see in the formal delivery of the budget. So pursuant to that, you can see for the 21st, the number of items that we have that we're working on to get ready for your formal deliberation next Tuesday night. And then accordingly, moving through January, you can see that on the 28th, we've got a number of topics we want to bring your attention, that we need some discussion on or that you've asked for some guidance and opportunity to provide feedback on as well. And then, of course, like I said, through February, you can see how things are shaping up. One of the things that we hope you will remember to put on your calendar, as it were, the week of February 11th is going to be kind of involved. We do ordinarily would say that Tuesday night would be important as your work session night in February, but we're asking that that be sort of relegated to the 12th, your attention on that night, in that we're looking to do the strategic plan program, a lot of which we will deal with priority-based budgeting that we've talked a lot about. We are anticipating that the 12th will be your commitment for that week versus Tuesday and Wednesday, that sometimes these kinds of meetings can entail.
So are we not meeting Tuesday then?
We are not meeting Tuesday, so the 12th will be-
Two days in a row.
The risk of disappointing you, that's right. Yeah, we won't be doing Tuesday.
Yeah, so make note on the 11th, we're not meeting, but we are.
I had a conflict that I was going to come too late and-
What works out for you?
The universe provides. I have a conflict on that 12th, just to let you know. You're going to miss me terribly. Don't be the same.
I say, you know, about my day. I don't know if that's going to shake out or not. I got to wait and see how things go. From here, I'll have some news.
Thanks, Matt. Appreciate that.
So and then, Mr. Mayor, on that day, and thanks for moving that to three, I've got a couple of commitments initially in with the governor's prayer breakfast and then after that.
I'll be there, too. I'll see you there.
You can write back?
Nope, because I got to stay in legislative stuff the rest of the week.
What was going on down at the end of the table? Jenna, again, you're just talking to people like you said you do.
Who said I was going to be there with them?
Yeah, if anything, anybody runs into anything on that date, if it works, make it, just let us know.
I do have just a genuine question. Did the, are we still waiting on the massage therapy ordinance? That was supposed to be on a work session, so we're just waiting for that work to wrap up before we sideboard it for it on a work session.
I think, Mr. Mayor, that's a very fair characterization.
Okay.
Absolutely. It is coming.
Okay. Just hadn't seen it on the grid, so I was just wondering.
All right, anything else on the grid? Questions?
Something, and I'm not quite sure if it falls, if it would fall in the future agenda items or a work session, or it should just be talked about in the agenda review, so if we're just going to, or not the agenda review, but the roundtable.
Yeah, we can start the roundtable.
I'm not sure where it falls.
Well, let's do, so for the new, for our new members as well, we usually do a round the table at the work sessions. If there's anything you need to highlight on the off week from our business meetings and to talk about, any of your mini work liaison type stuff, just kind of update the council, or if you want to bring up items that you'd like to see come up on the agenda to talk about in work sessions, et cetera, this is a time to be able to do that. So, thank you. Jenna, do you want to start?
Sure, I will. So this last week was attended leadership Wyoming, I mentioned it. Anyways, they had a great time in Casper. It was amazing. We did a lot of ride-alongs and talked about health, and it really evolved around a lot of mental health issues, and I just saw a lot of coincidences, I guess, is like overlap of what we've been talking about here and the struggles of what's happening in our community. And I just really felt that it was on my chest to, that we should do something as a city for them. One of our presentations was about that J Foundation, and I know you've talked about that, and some people are familiar, some people aren't, and I know Kyle is. I just feel it weighed on me that we really need to do something for our first responders, and if they were able to listen to that program, I think they would get a lot out of it, especially like dispatch, if people, you know, police, fire, I don't know how union, I don't know the differences between them, but anyhow, that program, I think it would cost to outfit, say, the end of it is that it's a boot check, and Kyle can probably explain it better, too, but everybody is given a pair of boots, and the idea is to help with suicide, you know, prevention. So my idea, and this is where I don't know if it goes on a work session to discuss or if we can do it on the side, but I'd like to see if we can, through sponsors, different nonprofits in the community, whether it be different grants, like I don't know if the victim service department, because there's a lot of overlap over there to the mental health and providing service for their servicemen and women, just looking at some kind of collaboration to be able to do that. I mean, it's going, like I said, 25,000 or so is what we're looking at. It's not super outrageous to outfit the first responders that we have at the city, but it's something that I don't feel the city should foot the whole bill, but if there's, you know, there's a plethora of different nonprofits, the 988 and the first responders, maybe those different nonprofits would be willing to help us move that kind of forward.
Carter, this kind of falls under your jurisdiction as far as staffing, and that would look like, I don't know if you want to think about it, if we need to get on something, whatever you, give us a direction on that.
Sure, sure.
Mayor, I think the school district has really dealt into this and done a lot with it. I think it's a great program.
They have, and if I could say, I think that that was, I know the collective health donated a large chunk to make that happen, so the McMurrays, to make that happen for all the seniors here. So I think collective health tapped out on J Foundation funds, but I know that there's a plethora of other people that see the value in that.
Carter, what would you say on forward? Is that something we'd want to talk about later, or is it something you'd have to process from, that would affect, you know, your staff?
Right.
I think it would be important that they listen to the presentation. I mean, it's not just give them a pair of boots and see ya, you know, to make it more meaningful and understand the purpose of the organization, but they should really listen. So, I mean, just throwing it out there, so take, you know, time, whatever. Like I said, I'm not sure where that fits, if it would be an agenda, that's where I was talking about. Like, I don't know if it would be on the future agendas or if that's something that we form on the side or what, but I just wanted to throw that out on this table just so that we see the feedback of my council mates, see if that's something that we're interested in.
Is that something you need a little more research on, do you think, Carter? Take on back to us?
I'd say so, yeah. I think it's a great idea and certainly a great program, but it would have to be a partnership as it relates to those who would be willing to help fund those kinds of, you know, the program. And so, yeah, we can certainly take that under advisement and try to bring back a proposal.
Carter, Jenna?
Yeah, I think it's great. I just, yeah.
Counsel's okay with Carter doing a little investigating for that?
I think that happens.
I think so. I mean, it is a great program. I don't want to water down anything that the school districts, you know, trying to do by any means because that's important, or first responders are very important, you know? And I don't know if it's that or yellow feather or, you know, what programs would be the best fit, but we definitely have a problem.
Okay. Let's give Carter some time just to kind of look at and see what he can come back with, possibilities for that, and see where council's direction would go. Thanks, Jenna. Michael?
Let's see, I attended the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting last week, and they elected officers, they elected Joe Hutchinson as chair and Andrew Hall as vice chairman.
they elected Joe Hutchinson as chair and Henry Hall as vice chair, and they considered a plot, it's a plat, Michael can probably describe it better than me, but it's a kind of a rezoning thing of a section of land on the locusts and that city property that's kind of juts out into Collins there, and so it's just got to be rezoned and replotted. So, other than that, this might be other things to contribute, so.
Holiday party afterwards.
That's right, holiday party afterwards, that's right. Short, short, sweet meeting.
Thanks, Michael.
Oh, one thing, one thing I did want to mention, just because I said I would, I was, I got a phone call yesterday from family, they were concerned about the pigeon population. I haven't mentioned it, I don't know what, where we go with that, but it was becoming, well, and their concern was related to bird, to avian flu.
Yeah.
To bird flu, and that, I've noticed that in some businesses, where pigeons congregate around entrances in particular, and, you know, right now, it's not, it's not being spread that way, I don't think, but it's, you know, anyway, I was thinking of your prior experience with bird infestations when you're tenure.
Yeah.
But, anyway. I'm, I'm, I'll be right behind you, Carter.
Thank you.
But that was, that was all I had.
Thanks, Michael. Yeah, do you have anything?
Oh, nothing.
Thank you. Amber?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to thank all of the state representatives and senators for joining us for the legislative dinner that we had last week, and to staff at the Fort Wyoming Center for hosting us. You know, productive conversation, city staff did an amazing job putting together information, very robust piece of information about bills we're monitoring and supporting and opposing that was included in an info packet last week, I think, so if you're interested to see what that was, take a look there. Would encourage folks, the session kicked off today, yes, Tuesday, today, so I would encourage folks, this is an important time to be involved in government, so keep an eye on what's, not just what's going on here locally, but down in Cheyenne as well, and I know city staff will be, and a number of us as well, for things that impact Casper specifically, so that was just a great event, and I'm really appreciative of all the work that went into it. I got to speak on a panel with Kyle and with city manager Napier and city attorney Nelson for Leadership Casper, talking about local, oh, and Chief McPeters and Chief, no.
Jared Levin.
Jared, yeah, so some other folks from city and the county to talk about local government and public safety, so mostly took a lot of questions from those folks about local government, and I'm just appreciative of the opportunity to represent there. Next week, this week, I have Metro Animal Task Force on, that's tomorrow, and then LGBTQ Advisory on Friday, and I will be out of town on vacation next Tuesday, so I will miss that meeting and update you all. I'll punt to Kyle for Metro updates, and then any other updates that I need, I'll catch you on the week following.
All right. Thank you. Pat? Any updates?
So...
I don't think there's any other Pat.
More so questions. So, when we receive emails such on the massage therapy, and I don't know if he, Dino sent to all counselors, or just the new ones, I, and so I guess, where, where do you feel we are on massage therapy, you know, point in time type of?
Let me say one thing, too, I'm glad you brought that up, Pat. So, on emails that we're all on, don't respond all. It can be, it can be a, seen as a public meeting, and so make sure that if you do respond to, but if it goes to everybody, make sure you respond just to that individual and so forth. Does that make sense? I just wanted to say that really quick, too.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, okay, sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, Counselors, so, yeah, we're actively working on a draft. I actually have a meeting this Friday with the Assistant County Attorney and the Health Department to discuss what role, if any, the Health Department would have in, you know, providing health inspection, so it's a work in progress. I don't anticipate we'd have a draft that would be ready to bring forward to a work session, probably till February. I have been in contact with a number of massage therapists, I met with Mayor Juarez from Mills to discuss some of her ideas, and I did commit to, you know, having an iterative process with them before we bring something to a public forum, so I would, I would anticipate sometime in February.
Any other questions, Tom?
Yeah, and then, there's one that I probably won't respond to, but, and on the snow plowing in a public park, Jenna's already...
I replied all, but it was only us three.
Yeah, so...
So, if that was okay.
If it's four or more, yes, so if there's like two or three, is that okay, or should we just...
It was just, it was pointed toward one.
Oh, perfect.
Oh.
So that's why I...
Mayor, as long as there's not a quorum on there, then we're probably not technically in violation, but I just encourage everyone to be very cognizant of who is on the email training, because that could very easily be a violation.
So, and the last thing I think I've got is about the branches, so, you know, it, it looks to me like the majority of concentration is in Ward 1, and so, I live in North Casper, so I've got great concern of trying to get the word out. I did take it to the, I'm on Mills on Wheels board, I took, took it to that, and hopefully that'll get out on their routes, and then I did bring it up, took it over to the senior, senior center, also, I took it out to Ag Resources, I've been to different groups, but is there any possibility, I mean, North Casper in particular is, for the most part, impoverished, and we've got some huge trees that need a lot of help, that people can't afford, but I, I don't know what's possible or not possible as far as some postcard, or what the city has actually done to promote this, other than news release and all of that.
Mr. Mayor, Counselor, I appreciate your concern, because you're right, this, this grant and subsequent program is definitely targeted towards impoverished, to use your, your term, areas, and so, we have gone through a very extensive outreach effort to try to make sure that neighbors know about this, and certainly folks that are within that target area, that we are obligated to direct this towards, and I was astounded by the amount of applications we already have, as a, as a result of the efforts both through social media, direct contact, as well as, you know, media, general media sort of exposure has brought us, and so, I'm very pleased with the direction that staff has gone with all this, and it is yielding quite a bit of excitement, as far as people trying to participate, and, and I would say, that is how they participate, they have to apply in order to have their part of the urban forest considered, if you will, to receive these funds and receive this help, so, we'll get some, we'll get some more data to you to make sure you understand how many folks are involved, and who all's, you know, the numbers of those who are trying to participate, I think you'll be pretty pleased.
I just, I think, but I think it's going to be very cold this, over this next weekend, but that's the only other thing I know to do, is go door to door, you know, down in North Casper, so.
Yeah. And, and, Mr. Mayor, Counselor, I don't think you have to do that, I think word is getting out there, so please don't feel obligated to, to take that kind of job.
There's an open house, Amber, too.
There's open houses, exactly. There's a lot of exposure that's happening.
It's a lot of people I've talked to.
Anything else, Tom?
No, I think you've already hit, Amber, thanks for bringing that up. I, I thought it was very good also, and, and Carter and Mayor, you did a great job, and I just, I don't know if we got across the finish line, but at least they're aware, but the pushback that you got from Representative Locke was very interesting.
Yeah.
So, I'd say the least, but...
Thanks, Tom. Appreciate it. Thanks for being there. All right. Mr. Cam Ross?
At a DDA meeting, Downtown Development Authority Board meeting last Wednesday, we talked about moving their office space to the Mineral Resource Center building that overlooks David Street Station, so they'd be in the same building as Visit Casper, Advance Casper, a lot of synergy there. We talked about potentially spinning back up a microloan program that used to be utilized in the past to help tenants and property owners with signage, graffiti abatement, facade improvements, those sorts of things, so looking at putting that program back together. We talked about documenting homeless encounters from stakeholders represented at the DDA, some of them already do that. Lisa and the library have a very comprehensive system that they use to catalog all those encounters, but it's expensive, and not a lot of other folks are able to leverage programs like that, and so, talked about the DDA potentially centralizing those encounters just for the purpose of data collection, and so that that board can be more informed about what it is their tenants and property owners are experiencing. And then we also talked about getting a presentation from the Wyoming representative for Main Street, it's a national organization that I have expressed interest in exploring, potentially joining, I know there's lots of other Main Street programs around the state, and could bring a lot of tools, resources, funding to the DDA, and so, looking to get a presentation from our state chapter representative here in the next couple of months. Thank you, Amber, for mentioning the dinner, I was very pleased with the turnout, I felt like it was the most productive one since I've been on council, so I'm looking forward to seeing how those conversations are reflected in discussions down in Cheyenne, and yeah, thank you to city staff, you all did a great job organizing and presenting and putting it all together, so thank you. And then, Amber mentioned this as well, but just thank you to Lisa Campbell and Leadership Casper for the invite to take part in their panel, love taking questions from people, and it was very, very reliant on the questions from the attendees, and so, always thankful for those opportunities, I attended an Americans for Prosperity luncheon this afternoon that ended up being just an hour-long conversation about local government, too, so thanks to Amy Womack and that group for the invite there. Yeah, I love talking about this stuff, and there's very few opportunities to chat about, most folks don't want to talk about city ordinances and budgets and stuff, so whenever I find those groups of people, I'm always excited to take part, so that's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you. Press Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to echo Amber and Kyle, too, with the legislative dinner, I thought that was fantastic, except for the very end, as I was going out to my car, the ice got me. Thankfully, Chief McPeters was there and helped pick me up off the ground, so, but it was, yeah, it was a wonderful evening, got to meet a lot of people, and some great conversations. I like it.
Thank you, sir. Just a couple of things from my area, Michael and I and Carter met with the chair and vice chair of County Commission on Monday for lunch, just to touch base, so that was a productive meeting, had a good conversation. We're going to try to do that more often, to talk about how things are going and trying to be able to work, both Dave, North, and Dallas were very receptive to work together in a lot of things, and kind of the agendas, trying to align to work together on that. We will also have the Council of Government breakfast this Thursday at 7:00 a.m., so Michael and I will be there for that, you don't have to come if you don't want to, but you're welcome to. And so, for anybody that's new on that, what we do is, we meet with all the municipalities' heads, all the mayors and the county commission, and we just kind of sit and talk about how things are going in the community, what they need, what we can partner with, concerns and things like that, so we do that once a month, so I'm looking forward to getting back into that group. We do that at Aggiates, so if anybody's ever curious, please let me know. On Monday, I will be emceeing the MLK Day festivities, they have a march at 9:00 a.m. from R321, and then we'll march down to First United Methodist, but they will have a program there, and I'll emcee that. Kendall Terry, if anybody knows Kendall Terry and his wife, Ginger will be the keynote speakers, I actually work with Ginger for Healing Place, where she's a counselor, where I counsel, do therapy as well, so looking forward to doing that. So, if you're interested, it's going to be very cold, apparently, that day, but if you're interested in marching, that would be great, if not, the service and the program will be right after that, so I'd probably say close to 10 o'clock, is when they'll start having the things on. So I'll be there for that. Again, thank you, too, for the state legislative dinner, I want to thank the staff for putting that together, the hard work that they did, the council members, the good showing, like Kyle said, that was really nice. Within that same vein, we, several of us will be going down to WHAM next week to do a little work with legislators, kind of getting ready for that, and I can't remember, I know Michael's going, Kyle's going, Pat, Jenna, and then myself, I'll be down there for it as well, so, we'll be heading down there and working a little bit, see what we can do to help out with that continued efforts.
So, is there any, I mean, as far as participation, what we're supposed to do, or...
I think you're like the vice president or something. Interim chair, rather.
Mr. Mayor, Counselors, there is definitely an agenda that is in full force with regard to that gathering, many of you have been before, and you will note that we try to interlace meetings with legislators while we're there, and attend hearings while we're there, you know, as those hearings become available, and many of you also know that we have some years of heavy involvement, some years of fairly mediocre involvement, depending on what the intensity of the issues are that are relevant to cities and towns, so, for those of you that are, well, we'll just put the agenda out for everybody, even though I know not everybody's going, so you can see what that involves and what's included and everything else, so, as far as specific interest is concerned, if you have some of that as an attendee, that we can help orchestrate, please, please let us know, we can try to put that together, but indeed, we will be utilizing a lot of your involvement to help with our outreach. WHAM does that for us as well, in the form of reception they put together, a dinner that they put together, and, and other activities that seeks your engagement.
So, when, Wednesday night's dinner, is that WHAM only?
Correct, yes.
And then, then Thursday's reception at night is the legislative reception?
You got it.
Okay.
So, I won't be able to make it that night, because I teach a class, so the more, you know, Vice Mayor or the other council members could be there to really do some, and shake and talk and to some of the state legislators would be absolutely.
If they show up, sometimes.
Yeah, combat or something like that.
Like last year, they were meeting till like 9:00, you know, 9:00 p.m., so we...
Yeah, if they can, and I'll be there for sure Wednesday night, and then most of Thursday until I have to come back for teach, but if we could get a few of our council members to stay for that, that would be fantastic.
And the last one that I've got a question for is the breakfast at the Capitol at 6:00 in the morning. I mean, do legislators actually show up for that?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor, your suspicion is well-placed as to how, how heavily attended that is. Certainly, we do have moments where, um, we have good showing, and, and sometimes we don't. Uh, the, the other thing I would have you remember, too, is that, um, we also have lunch opportunities where we, for example, on, on Friday, I believe it is, SLIB will be there, or at least some of the members of SLIB, and so that interaction will be available to us then, too. So there's a number of places and opportunities that, where some may not be as effective, others hopefully will be better or more.
This coming Friday? Because there's nothing listed in the agenda that I saw. So the, from 10 to 12 is the big five discussion?
That's, that's the one I'm talking about, yeah.
Oh, okay. Okay, okay.
If you need any other guidance on that, reach out to the city staff, um, any type of accommodation, I think they'll be taking care of that for us as well. So just reach out to them and, and, uh, I'll probably take care of that for you, too.
Absolutely.
Um, that's all I have. I will try to work a little bit better to try to make us a little bit more on time, so I'm a little rusty, we're almost an hour behind, but generally, I don't try to make sure to cycle too much conversation, because I think it's important for us to talk and, and have the good conversations around it, so. I'll keep, keep an eye on it. I'll look at Kyle and go like this.
No, I know, man. Pat's going to make a presentation.
Our questions valid?
They were, you know what, both of your questions were wonderful.
Oh.
Amber?
Sorry, I have a question.
Oh, I thought you were going like this. Okay. All right. I think that's all I got. Appreciate you guys all tonight, thank you.
Thanks, everybody.